I'd like to call the meeting of the Waukegan City Council for October 3, 2011, to order a roll call. Alderman Valco.
Here.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest. I entertain a motion to seat a Mayor Pro Tem.
I would like to move that Lisa May, Alderman May, be Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
If I may comment on that. It's been the policy for some time now that we've been rotating this and the mayor's not here, we rotate it to the next Alderman in line, so that's the policy we, that's council kind of has been following. So it's Lisa's turn, Alderman May's turn.
Do we take a roll on that yet? No. All in favor.
Aye.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, October 3, 2011, City of Waukegan City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Erudite.
Oh, sorry. Hey. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The first item on our agenda was going to be a Paint the Town presentation, but Jeff Payne is en route to Waukegan right now, so he will be unable to give the presentation. So I just want to remind everyone, on October 15, we're going to have the Paint the Town event with Delilah from Light FM. If you go to W-L-I-T-E-F-M dot com, you can fill out a form and volunteer to participate in this event. You can sign up for anywhere from a two-hour, three-hour, 10-hours, however long you want to work. It should be a great day for Waukegan. I encourage everyone to get involved. I'm also going to go through just some of the upcoming events for October. On October 4, the Waukegan Yacht Club welcomes the public for lunch, 11:30 to 2:00 on October, beginning on October 4, Tuesday through Friday. So they're opening for the public for lunches during the week. On this Wednesday, October 5, Main Street's having its Members Plus event. It's noon to 1 o'clock at Big Ed's. It's $5 for Waukegan Main Street members, $8 for non-members. Craig Kitchen from Paint the Town will be at the Members Plus event, and he'll give you an update on how the project's going. From my understanding, they are still looking for volunteers, so once again, I encourage everyone to volunteer at this event. Starting on October 7 and running through October 22, the Bowen Park Theater Company is presenting A Piece of My Heart. Encourage everyone to go down, come to the 7th Ward and go to Bowen Park and come see this play. October 15 will be our next Art Walk event, starting at 5 o'clock till 10 p.m. Delilah will be doing a live broadcast from Dandelion Gallery that evening. Encourage everyone to event, everyone to attend the October Art Walk event. Also on October 15 is Ramsey Lewis at the Genesee Theater. They have a lot of stuff going on, so. Clockwise Theater will start Play the Long-Awaited on October 21. It's going to run through November 13. They do have a new subscription series. You can see three plays if you buy the subscription. It's only $36. You can see three plays, $12 each. I encourage everyone to check out Clockwise. It's a great, great little theater. October 22, it's the Zombie Walk in downtown Waukegan, starting at noon and going to 5 p.m. They're going to start at the Jack Benny Plaza. There will be a preview of a indie film screening at the Genesee Theater and also Night of the Living Dead, starting at 7 p.m. And that's a local filmmaker on that movie, Dead. On October 23, the Waukegan Symphony Orchestra is presenting their fall concert. And this will be at Trap Auditorium. Sunday, October 23, this is Genesee Theater, Third Day, the Make Your Move Tour, with special guests 10th Avenue North and Trevor Morgan. I'm not quite sure. October 26, Stomp at the Genesee Theater. October 28, Literary Witches, a storytelling festival hosted by the Waukegan Public Library, 7:30 p.m. at the Genesee Theater. That's Friday, October 28. That's Halloween weekend. On the 29th, we have George Jones celebrating his 80th birthday concert, October 29, at the Genesee Theater. October 30, Vin Centennial, a Halloween tribute to Vincent Price's 100th birthday. This is at the Genesee Theater, starts at 6 p.m. And thanks to Dan Moran for the nice mention in the weekend paper about this event. And that's what we have happening in Waukegan for the remainder of October. And that will conclude Mayor's comments. Next on the agenda is audience time. First on the list, we have Shamika Furlough. Ms. Furlough, if you could state your name and your address, please come on up.
Shamika Furlough, 4246 Hickory Hills Drive, Waukegan, Illinois. Good evening, Council. I stand before you as a representative of management of the City of Waukegan. The first two roles here, I represent. We, as management, have, has discussed the past, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, actually. We discussed this past Sunday, the recent change that may be coming to us through SEIU. And in the past, we've accepted, you know, the furlough days for the 12 months. Last fiscal year, we accepted the raise of health insurance. We accepted the raise in the workload because of the layoffs. With that, any stipulations that our higher-ups ax of us, we obliged. Now, we, the management, are in a position to fight for answers for an unfair alignment. We are asking that the vote to bring management into SEIU be tabled for this reason, for these reasons. There weren't any notifications of these changes to any of the management's schedule to join the union. The question of our seniority still stands in a state of confusion with this merger. Although we are a collective bargaining unit, we really didn't get a vote or choice in this matter. Who represented us as management in negotiations for this change is unknown, and we were unaware of how much information was given to our city council so they can make an accurate vote tonight. If we were forced to join any union, was there even an option for us to start our own? With those statements, we're just hoping that you take in consideration our feelings about this, and thank you for allowing us to speak tonight.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Next on the list, we have Violet Ricker.
My name is Violet Ricker. I live at 203 West Water Street. I'm the Director of Waukegan Main Street, our downtown development nonprofit, and I'd just like to take a few minutes and let you know what we've been up to over the past couple of months. Thank you very much, Alderman May, for keeping us posted on all of the exciting events we have going on in October. I want to, again, plug October 15, which is the Art Walk. It's going to be an exciting event all day long. We are still looking for volunteers to help us out, and we have a number of other things going on that evening. Ramsey Lewis will be at the Genesee Theater. There's also a concert at Joplin's Java. And then at dusk that evening, we will be relighting the historic restaurant sign that will be rehung on Fong's Kitchen, which is at the corner of Genesee and Madison Avenue. That's a very exciting project that's part of the Main Street Design Committee's Sign, Lighting, and Awning Program. So we're really looking forward to that ceremony. So please come out October 15 to downtown Waukegan for all kinds of exciting things. Just to let you know what we've been doing recently, we held our annual meeting in September, and we've elected a new slate of board members. They're on your list here. I'll just quickly read them to you. Our President is Mary Claire Jakes. Our Vice President is Bob Sobel. Our Secretary is Dr. Al Baldwin, and our Treasurer is Matt Burleson. And the rest of the board is made up of Brian Smith, Brendan Alviani, Nadine Burleson, Tom O'Connell, Rick Larson, Louise Correa, Madeline Seargle, Jamie O'Meara, Brett Schroeder, Alderman Lisa May, David Vargas, and Mike Portell. We're very fortunate to have a wonderful crew of volunteers working with Main Street to help us further our goal of bringing more businesses and more people to downtown Waukegan. Over the last few months, we've opened several new businesses, including a stained glass gallery and workshop on South Genesee. And just yesterday, we celebrated a grand opening of a new hair salon at 16 South Genesee Street. So the Art Walks have been a great success this summer. We look forward to continuing them through the fall, and we have several exciting projects you'll be hearing about from us soon, including new signage in some of the available properties downtown and a kiosk project, which will be putting informational signage and maps and more information about our downtown businesses. So again, please review our events that are happening for the rest of the month. We look forward to seeing you at all of them, and particularly on October 15. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Violet. Next, we have Anna Finn and Amy Stragie.
Anna Finn, 3315 Victoria Lane.
Amy Stragie, 328 Oak Terrace in Highwood.
We're stepping up today to talk about a newly formed, non-for-profit organization named Waukegan Animals Getting Saved, or WAGS. WAGS was founded only a few months ago, but we have already begun to make an impact in our community and in the lives of Waukegan animals. We have participated in the Waukegan Park District's Canine Patient Trace and in the Fourth of July Parade. But our biggest event to date was a low-cost spay-neuter and vaccination clinic that was held just yesterday. Working with Spay Illinois, who is an organization that works to offer low-cost spay-neuter clinics throughout Illinois, along with Spay and Stay and Alliance for Humane Action, we were able to bring a low-cost spay-neuter and vaccination clinic to Waukegan. We want to thank these organizations for making this event possible. We also would like to thank Jim Onan of Onan Enterprises, who generously donated a space for us to hold this event. This location served as the perfect location for this event and for the services that we provided. At yesterday's event, we were able to spay and neuter over 115 animals and offer vaccinations to many more.
We would especially like to thank the WAGS board members, including Allison Graham, our President, Wayne Motley, our Vice President, Alex Rodriguez, Heidi Denzel, Susan Elliott, and Nicole Garza. Each of them worked tirelessly throughout the entire weekend to make this event a success. This success would also not have been achieved without our many local volunteers and some volunteers coming from as far away as Milwaukee to help. There are also volunteer vets and vet techs from many local animal hospitals and clinics, too many to name. If I had more time and could remember all their names, I could think of a whole list of people that helped. But I also wanted to especially thank locals Amy and Bob Onan, Keith Turner, and the entire Motley clan, including wife Carol Motley, daughter Ashley, son Brandon, and at least two Motley grandchildren. I think there may have been some other Motleys, but I may have missed. All of these volunteers gave up their entire day, some people arriving as early as 5 a.m. and some staying till midnight or 1 a.m. at the latest. It was a beautiful, highly successful event that shows what good can come when you network with different groups and collaborate for the good of the community. WAGS will have many other events in the future, so keep your eyes on our Facebook page and just search for Waukegan Animals Getting Saved. You can also reach us via email at wags-waukegan@hotmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barbara Anderson, and I'm here because...
Address?
I'm sorry. My address is 1319 Hickory. And I'm here because I was out of town on the 26th of September, and I received a call from my son stating that my landlord was there, and he told my son that he was going to call the police on him if he didn't give him his name. So I told my son that he didn't have to give him his name, and I asked him to put him on the phone. And he put my landlord on the phone, and I asked him, why was he going to call the police on my son? And he said, well, I've been trying to get in touch with you, and I haven't been able to. But I talked to my landlord before the conversation on the 26th. I talked to him on my son's phone, and I explained to him when I was going to be back in town. And he told me, okay. And I'm sorry, I'm nervous, too.
Don't be nervous.
But anyway, I explained to him when I was going to be back in town, okay, which would have been Monday. I wasn't able to come back Monday. I came back Tuesday, and I'm sorry, I'm getting mixed up. But anyway, to make a long story short, the police was called on my son because he wouldn't sign a piece of paper or because he wouldn't give his name. And they, the police came.
How old is your son?
I was still holding the phone with my son while the police was beating and kicking on my door, and I could hear the officer saying, if you don't open the fucking door, we're going to kick the, kick the fucking door in. And I told my son, do not open the door, because they don't have a reason to come in my apartment. And I also called the Waukegan Police Department, and I told them what was going on. The lady that I spoke to said that she was going to call the officers and tell them to leave my place because that was a landlord-intended dispute. But the landlord was saying that he didn't know who my son was and he was trespassing. And that wasn't true, because my son paid him rent while I was out of town. And then the rent was due again, and I just told him to just wait until I got home and I would pay him. So it was just a big thing for no reason. And I just don't feel that it was right for them to come near and harass him like that and kick on my door and swear and swear at him the way that they did. And the landlord was wrong, too, because he knew who my son was. And that's basically it. And if you want to know the officer's names, it's Gordon and Pelson.
Thank you.
All right.
We appreciate your comments, Ms. Anderson. Thank you.
Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan, Illinois. Founder and President, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind and National Action Network of Lake County. For the last couple of months, citizens have been coming forth regarding the issues of the conduct of the officers. And I don't know, I mean, I don't know if it's because we got an Alderman here now that's on the, I mean, that's on the council, form of cop or whatever, but there have definitely been an escalation in the, in the, in the conduct of the officers. We know the officer's job hard, but at the same time, they, many of them are making it hard on themselves, and they make it hard on their fellow officers, which is, which, you know, all of them are not bad, but you have some good ones out there. But some of the conduct of the officers, it's really hard to see the good ones coming. I didn't have no reason coming to this lady's house. I mean, once they got there, they found out they couldn't get in, leave. Okay? But you can't just kick on people's doors and bust the doors in and don't have a warrant. Totally, totally out of pocket. But these are some of the issues that I have been addressing here with the hypocritical and unfair enforcement of the law. This has been going on, that was the whole reason that I first came to this city council meeting back in 2004. Little did I know, the first time that I stepped inside this council, it would end up in federal court because of these issues. When you try to keep people out of the city council who have issues to address that are not favorable to the city, but you want to let everybody in where the issues are favorable, that's unfair. That's hypocritical, that's unfair enforcement of the law. When we tried to protest about the issues dealing and surrounding the issue of the $500 empowerment, officers were sent to my house two days before any event. I wasn't even on city property. I'm on park district property. You sent an officer to hand-deliver a letter to my house. That's unfair. Let's talk about Mr. Arthur Bromfield. I've watched many shows throughout this city, Hoarders, and as you have it, here's a man, you tore his house down because you didn't like the way he was living. In many cases, you could, there was any, many other options you could have taken. But there's a lot of houses around here now that are still standing, that are in worse conditions than here's. But you tore this man's house down, hypocritical, unfair enforcement of the law. You had officers that was driving with things hanging from their windshield, obstructions from their windshield up onto the police parking lot, getting out of their personal cars with stuff hanging from the window. And then they go inside, then they go into the community, and they harass and intimidate people for having things hanging from their car. That's hypocritical, unfair enforcement of the law. No repercussions on them, but they throwing the book at many people who don't have license plates on their car, have things hanging from their car. That's, that's not right. And you have Deletrade Tannard, who came down here, who was making an attempt to protect his property in his backyard. You know, they say ignorance is no excuse, so he fired a weapon out to keep a would-be burglar from taking his property off his car, out of his, off his yard, out of his yard, in his backyard, in a fenced-in area, right across the street. So you threw the book at him and gave him the full level of the law. Then right across the street from him in less than 50 feet, you have one of the store owners, an Arabic store across the street. He come outside, he fires his weapon off on city, on the city street where children are. But you allow the police officers, allow this man to just drive right off. His cousin picks him up and drive him off, not even as much as a fingerprint. So these are some of the issues that continue to go on, and I ask this question of you all. Hypothetically, if you had someone who had filed a complaint, or I should say, a class action suit against the city based on hypocritical and unfair enforcement of the law, when these things, I mean, when these things continue to happen, why would anybody even consider settling when the very issues that have been filed continue to happen, never stop? You still have the same issues that are going on in this city. So I think that's about it, and I just want to say, you just can't help people just coming in and kicking people's doors in with no reason. I'm going to have the young lady, I'm going to take her, have her to file a complaint, because that's the only, that's the only, I mean, if that's the only recourse we have, we're going to have to fill the, we're going to have to fill the police department up with complaints until we get some attention. This, this is the type of thing that happened in New York and all over the places where people are, are coming up, and they're standing up. We don't want that here in this city, but if you continue to allow these officers to do the things that they're doing, having no respect for the citizens, you cannot help and expect the officer to give respect until they learn how to come into these communities and have some respect for these citizens. I'm not saying that's all officers, but the bad ones is making it hard on their fellow officers. You need to do something about it. That's a request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. That concludes audience time. Next, I have a motion for the minutes of last meeting. I have a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nope. Next, we have resolutions and proclamations. I have a proclamation proclaiming the month of October 2011, Walktober.
Walktober.
Walktober. Wayne?
Proclamation, Waukegan's October is now Walktober. Whereas the City of Waukegan is enjoying a renewed energy and momentum along with a fresh focus on community pride, and whereas the City of Waukegan celebrated a successful spirit month in September, and whereas Waukegan's October is gearing up to be one of the best ever in our community, will be featuring a multitude of family events, including Paint the Town, Art Walk, Zombie Walk, live concerts and shows at Genesee Theater by Ramsey Lewis, and Stomp, the Ray Bradbury Storytelling Festival, and Halloween Fest, to name a few, and whereas the City of Waukegan requires support from all levels of our community to thrive and be successful, and whereas the City of Waukegan and our partners welcome everyone to come, experience all of the exciting events and activities taking place here, and now for the resolved that Mayor Sabanjin and members of the Waukegan City Council do hereby proclaim October 2011 as Walktober in the great city of Waukegan. Further be resolved that a suing boss copy of this resolution, this proclamation signed by the mayor and city clerk be presented this first, the state dated the third day of Walktober 2011. Does someone have to make a motion to accept it?
Okay. I have a motion by Alderman Moiseo and second by Alderman Tempest to proclaim the month of October 2011, Walktober. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're going to have an executive session tonight regarding settlement of claims pending and imminent litigation and collective bargaining negotiations. I'd like to entertain, if someone would entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Moiseo, to go into executive session.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, please.
Roll call. Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest. Okay. Roll call. Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Okay.
All right, so next item on the agenda is the Labor Relations Committee. Co-Chairman, Alderman Moiseo.
Labor Relations, item A, approved memorandum of understanding and collective bargaining agreement between City of Waukegan and Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local Number 73. That's going to be held over or tabled until Monday at 6 o'clock. Now make that motion. Do we need a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Newsom.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Wayne, just so we get that right, that will be Monday, October 10.
6 p.m.
At 6 p.m.
You got it.
Right here.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the Judiciary Committee report. And I will give that report. First item, the Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the amendment to the intergovernmental purchase and sale agreement for 100 North Sheridan Road, and I so move.
Second.
Second, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Moiseo.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on Judiciary Committee, the Judiciary Committee recommends to adopt an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as potable water supply in designated area in their formal shell sedation, 2159 North Lewis Avenue. So move. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on Judiciary Committee, the Judiciary Committee recommends to adopt an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as potable water supply in designated area in their formal shell sedation, 2159 North Lewis Avenue. So move. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, we have the Public Safety Committee report. Alderman Conken.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee met on September 26th at 6:00 p.m. We have several items. Item A is to approve the contribution of $5,000 to Lake County Crime Stoppers. So the Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to contribute $5,000 to Lake County Crime Stoppers, PO Box 459, Mundlin, Illinois 60060-0459.
Motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item B has to do with parking on Orchard Avenue, south of Washington Street, and the Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to draft an ordinance to reflect restricted parking on both sides of Orchard Avenue, south of Washington Street.
We have a motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
A vote aye. Just to clarify it, it's not all of Orchard, it's only like from Washington Street, about 100 feet on one side and 150 on the other side.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item C has to do with the use of mobile telephones while operating a motor vehicle, and the Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to propose that local ordinance section 21-95 entitled "Use of Mobile Telephone While Operating a Motor Vehicle" be added to the list of violations applicable to section 21-137 entitled Administrative adjudication of Parking and Vehicle Compliance Tickets. What this does is it allows the police officers to write the ticket as if it were a parking ticket and thereby avoid the state issued and going through courts and everything else. It makes it easier, and it's a $50 fine if you get cited for it, and it's just something easier to adjudicate, just like a traffic ticket as opposed to going through a court system. So I so move.
We have motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Item D has got to do with the car cameras for the police department. Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to waive the bid procedure and purchase eight squad car video camera systems from the sole source provider, L3 Mobile Vision Incorporated, 90 Fannie Road, Boonton, New Jersey, 07005, for an amount not to exceed $47,000.
We have motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Rivera. Roll call.
Alderman Valco.
I have a question. Chief Greathouse, if you can answer for me, sir. These are eight cameras that are going in. We just purchased six squad cars about two months ago. Will these, six of these eight, go into the new squad cars? And I see the letter from Deputy Chief McCormick said to replace the ones that are aging. So the new ones, six of the eight will go into the new six squad cars?
Correct. And the other two will go into other squads, that the camera systems are malfunctioning problems in itself by going over from the I-VAC system, which we've had in the past for almost 10 years now, to a newer, this L3 system. Instead of buying a brand-new car, what we're doing, just replacing some of the equipment so we can have more longevity for the vehicles.
One statement, then another question. I saw Deputy Chief also said that we're getting two back because the motorcycle ones, they're gonna take it back and give us credit for two?
That's correct. We had cameras on the motorcycles, we don't utilize them as much anymore, so what's happening is we're just gonna trade them in for squads and put them into squads that are more effective use.
The last question, sir, is how are we gonna pay for it? As far as, not the cameras, excuse me, this does not include the installation.
The installation comes from another service that's done. Havy, I believe, is the...
Is that part that we authorized when we bought the squad cars? Was that included in that?
In the price of the squad cars? No. Installation is different for these camera systems. If you understand? We have to outfit the squad cars.
Correct.
After we buy the squad cars, we have to outfit them with lights and cages and things of that sort. That's a whole nother process. That cost is not included in the cost of the vehicle. When you approved for the vehicles, it was for the purchase of the vehicles and then some of the equipment, but the installation of that equipment has to be sourced out to someone else. We'll get the grand total of that once we get everything in.
Okay. Because we bought the cars, and then we also okayed the money to outfit the cars, but this is not part of that.
Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir.
Anything further?
My vote is aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Motion passes.
Item E, this has to do also with the camera system. It's an integral system that, these are modular components, and they work together. The computers that run the cameras and the servers and everything else all go together in the cars. So for item E, this Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to waive the bid procedure and purchase computer server and equipment that will support the L3 camera, in-car video camera systems from the sole source provider, L3 Mobile Vision Incorporated, 90 Fannie Road, Boonton, New Jersey, 07005, for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
We have a motion by Alderman Conken, second by Alderman Rivera. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
And finally, just for information only, just to let everybody know that the Waukegan Police Department received forfeiture checks, three of them from the Illinois State Police in the amount of $304.33, $6,713.53, $1,352, and they have all been deposited into the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Conken. Next on the agenda, we have Old Business, and there is no Old Business. And the next is Reports and Communications, and we don't have any of those either. So under New Business, I have a motion by Alderman, sorry, Newsom, second by Alderman Moiseo, to approve the payroll dated September 22nd, 2011, in the amount of $1,251,891.74. Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye. We have a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Moiseo, to approve the bills dated October 3rd, 2011, in the amount of $973,637.65. Roll call.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye. Approval of block parties. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have approval of raffle sale application for the Association of Music Parents. We have a motion by Alderman Moiseo, and second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call.
It's just a...
Oh, we just do a voice call? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then we have a motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Newsom, for the approval of trick-or-treat hours on Sunday, October 30th, 2011, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Next, there's no ordinances and resolutions on the agenda, so next we have Alderman's time. And I believe it's Alderman Valco? Alderman Valco?
Thank you, ma'am. I'll make it short and sweet. The SEIU contract, the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Service Employees International Union, we're having a special meeting Monday night. That's what, it's a special meeting. That's all I have to say. Go ahead.
Alderman Rivera.
On Wednesday, October 19th, I'm gonna be having a ward meeting over at the Waukegan Township Park Place. It'll be from 6:00 to 8:00. So all are welcome, regardless if you don't live in my ward or not. It's gonna be an information meeting to the public, so please come and join me, and I'd love to have you there. So it'll be October the 19th, Wednesday, October the 19th. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
Pass.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you, just a couple things. One, obviously, you just heard that we've approved the trick-or-treating hours from 2:00 to 4:00 on Sunday, the 30th. The reason I want to mention it now is because the airing of our next meeting would probably be later that same night, it'd be too late, so just to make sure everybody's safe on those days in between, especially between those hours when all the kids are out. And finally, I'd just like to mention that we had a retired Waukegan fireman pass away this past week, Mr. George Hall, and I'd like to send my condolences to his family. Mr. Hall retired a Waukegan fireman after many years of faithful service, so I just wanted to send my condolences to the Hall family. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo.
Pass.
Alderman Bedling. Alderman Newsom.
Just one thing. I don't know if the council remembered from last council meeting where they came from Andrew Cook, the Magna School, to make your vote. I want to remind everyone to please make their vote for the school to get those funds. I did look online, and they slipped to 29, so we need to get the word out, and it's until the 6th, I believe, October the 6th, so we only have a few more days to make those votes, and I think it's the top 25.[1761.12]